Welcome back, everyone. I think, I guess I see we have our interpreter has their video on. I have my video on. So this is the second session of the Copyright Office's hearings on the Section 1201 rulemaking. This is Class 17, which is examining a proposed exemption for all uses for accessibility purposes. My name is Reagan Smith. I'm General Counsel of the Copyright Office. And I think some were listening to the hearing earlier this morning, but just to briefly go through the rules of the role of the road, we are trying to focus on clarifying and honing in on issues raised by the comments and are excited to hear from everyone today. The questions will be moderated by Copyright Office attorneys or our colleague at the NTIA. If you wish to speak, we are recommending that you use the raise hand feature in Zoom. It's a little button on the side and to please mute your audio to minimize any extraneous noise. We are also asking for this session that if you are not speaking and you're not the interpreter, you turn off your video to promote accessibility for this hearing. You can use the chat if you have any questions and someone from the Copyright Office will answer and try to facilitate any issues. We are asking because we have limited time to please try to limit your responses to the question posed. I think everyone will get a chance to contribute and to dive into the issues. And then one last note, this is the same Zoom link for the whole day. So if you wish to listen in on the last session, which will follow at 2:30 Eastern, just stay on the line. So now I will call on the government officials to introduce themselves and then the participants, and then we'll get started. So Ms. Chauvet?
Yes, hello. My name is Anna Chauvet. I serve as Associate General Counsel.
Thank you. Mr. Bartelt?
Hi, my name is Nick Bartelt. I'm an attorney advisor with the Office General Counsel.
Thank you. Mr. Gray?
Hi, everyone. I'm Mark Gray. I'm also an attorney advisor here in the Office of General Counsel.
Thank you. And Mr. Cheney?
Good afternoon. My name is Stacy Cheney. I'm a senior attorney advisor at the Office of Chief Counsel at NTIA.
Thank you. So now I'm going to ask the panelists to introduce each other. I'm going to try to go in alphabetical order. So Mr. Band?
Hi, I'm Jonathan Band. I represent the Library Copyright Alliance.
Thank you. Mr. Bernard?
Hi, I'm Jack Bernard, and I'm an attorney and faculty member at the University of Michigan.
Emily, next we have Ms. Charleston.
Yes, thank you. I'm Kim Charleston. I'm the Executive Director of the Perkins Braille and Talking Book Library in Watertown, Massachusetts.
I'll be, no, stop.
Thank you. I think next is Mr. Ratchell. Hope I am saying that correctly.
Hi, yes, this is Clark Rockfall. I'm the Director of Advocacy and Governmental Affairs for the American Council of the Blind.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Reed. And if you could please, I don't want to introduce any student attorneys with you as well.
Thank you, Blake Reed, for the Samson Blushco Technology Law and Policy Clinic at the University of Colorado. We're here representing the American Council of the Blind, and I'm joined by my colleague Rachel Hertz. Rachel, do you want to chime in?
Hi, my name is Rachel Harris. I'm at Colorado Law.
Thank you. Mr. Reichert?
Hi, Mark Reichert, Executive Director of the Association for Education and Rehabilitation of the Blind and Visually Impaired.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenblum?
Hello, I am Howard Rosenblum, the CEO and Executive Director of Legal Services at the National Association of the Deaf. I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. Mr. Vogler?
Hi, I am Christian Vogler. I am a professor and administrator of the Technology Access Program, the director. Thank you very much.
Next, Mr. Marx?
Hello. My name is Dean Marx, and I am outside counsel to AACS LA and to DVD Copy Control. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Hello, I'm David Taylor. I represent DVD Copy Control Association and the AACS Licensing Manager, otherwise known as AACS LA. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe our last panelist is Mr. Williams.
Hello, thank you. Matthew Williams from Mitchell, Silverberg, and NUP. I'm representing the Joint Creators and Copyright Owners.
So thank you, everyone, for being here today. We're glad that we were able to convene virtually. I think to start the questioning will be Ms. Chauvet?
I thank you, Ms. Smith. For the proponents, the proposed exemption would extend to any work protected by a technological protection measure where circumvention is undertaken for the purpose of creating an accessible version for work for people with disabilities, though the proposed language does not define disabilities. So purposes of the exemption, how should disabilities should be defined? Should the exemption refer to disability laws for definition? Mr. Reed, may I start with you, please?
Thank you for the question, Ms. Chauvet. And I may tag Mr. Bernard to respond to this, but picking up on the discussion from the earlier hearing, I think this is one where the office could either just promulgate the language as proposed with some explanatory language in the final recommendation or the librarian's final rule, explaining that it's, we're talking about disability as broadly conceived. Alternatively, I think pointing to the definitions in the Americans with Disabilities Act as amended could be a workable approach. Mr. Bernard, I'm not sure if you have anything to add on that front.
All I'll add is that while the ADA is certainly a good place to point, if we're thinking we want to point to someplace, we should also be mindful that the public may be constrained by laws in their own state. And so I think we would want to leave open the opportunity that somebody who's trying to comport with a law that defines a person with a disability more broadly in their own state, that they would also be able to do that.
Thank you. If the exemption does not reference a specific disability law, how should the office ensure that the exemption applies only where circumvention is necessary to provide accessible copies of work to those who need them?
Well, I think the terms of--
Mr. Reed?
I'm sorry, Ms. Chauvet. I'll get my timing down, I swear. I think the language of the exemption as proposed does just that. It ensures that uses that are aimed at accessibility for people with disabilities would be covered. And I think the court's opinion and hathy trust is a good exemplar of the ability to figure this out. I think in, as we sit here and think about promulgating regulatory language, we can come up with lots of complex hypotheticals. But I think when faced with actual uses in practice, we don't have a particularly complicated time identifying what accessibility purposes are. And I think to the point that Mr. Bernard just made, there are a wide array of circumstances under which either a person with a disability or a third party seeking to assist them is going to engage in accessibility. And we think including those terms along perhaps with some guidance in the recommendation is good enough to set the scope.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, would you like to respond on this issue?
Thank you. As we discussed in the last panel a little bit, I do think it would be good to have a reference to the laws in place to try to define the scope of what we're talking about here. That said, we do understand the point being made by the proponents here that that might be overly restrictive. So I think they could be used as guideposts, and it could be emphasized that the fair use analysis, as it was conducted three years ago, is based in large part on the need to comply with laws such as those that define the term disabled.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I see your hand is raised.
Yeah, and I wonder, Ms. Chauvet, and please tell me if this line of remark is out of scope. But I think it would be helpful to have some discussion about the need for this exemption beyond just the definition of people with disabilities and the definition of accessibility, which is, I think, as we explained in our comments, extends quite far beyond the bounds of what disability law requires. In other words, unlike the previous exemption we discussed this morning, this exemption is designed to enable accessibility activities by individuals and third parties that may not be bound at all by disability law, but are in fact on sort of the cutting edge of making copyrighted works accessible. And I wonder if I could tag in Mr. Bernard to speak a little bit to that.
Mr. Bernard, would you like to add to that?
Sure. So I think the, one of the concerns that the proposed language is trying to address is the opportunity for people who have disabilities to equitably participate in society, to be able to work, to be able to take care of their children, to shop, to do all the kinds of things that people do. And when we have a system in place that says to people with disabilities, "You can't have access to the same thing that everyone else has access to" because it stands behind a kind of digital wall. It mean, and you will have to wait three years in order to be able to even bring forward a concern or up to three years. But this is systemically excluding people who the government, the clear public policy of the United States is to try to include. And so the reason for a broader scope here, looking at all the categories and classes of works, is to facilitate the kind of structure that exists already in the United States that is framed by its laws that are both proactive, so requiring things like the width of a door to be of a certain length or a curb cut, and responsive so that when someone who needs an accommodation requests it, they can have that accommodation in order to participate in society. And so this is why we're looking at the broader language here is to enable equitable participation that's consistent with US public policy.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, before I turn to questions about the scope or the class of works, did you have any further questions?
Thank you. You know, I have one question related to the panel we had earlier this morning where there seemed to be some agreement that since the circumvention would be conducted by disability service professionals or educators, it may be appropriate to make the language a little bit more flexible because they would be able to exercise reasonable and good judgment. I understand that this request is not, you know, so constrained for reasons that have been articulated in the record. And I just wonder if, does that relate to our understanding of whether a proposed exemption should reference the specific federal or state laws or connect the exemption to specific accessibility uses? I see. And so, Mr. Bernard, you raise your hand? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll try to address what I think you were asking about, but if I'm confused, that's possible. I got my second COVID shot yesterday, and I appear to be in a group of people who aren't responding well to it. So feel free to nudge me back into place. But you hearkened back to the discussion about the professional judgment of people who help students who have disabilities receive accommodations at educational institutions. But I think when we're talking about judgment here, that the fundamental judgment we're thinking about is a person who says, "I bought this service. I bought this technology. I bought this work, and I can't access it because it's inaccessible to me." And the judgment that I think we're talking about is the judgment to say, "This is not accessible, and now I want to make it accessible so that I can have the same benefits that everyone else has." If the work is not in a digital format, well, then people who have disabilities are able to make those kinds of accommodations for themselves. And people who are trying to access works that happen to be in digital format, which is increasingly the case, they would not be able to feel comfortable making those kinds of accommodations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marx. I see you had your hand raised. Would you like to add to that? And then Mr. Reed?
Yes, thank you very much. And I appreciate the remark that Mr. Bernard just made. One of the issues we were frankly having with the exemption as proposed was that it was so open-ended. So for example, Mr. Bernard just mentioned about a person with disability challenges having acquired a subscription to a service or lawfully acquired a copy of the work and not being able to access it. You know, that is sort of parameter that I think would be moving in the right direction to be able to properly spoke exemption. But as written, there's not, no qualification that in fact a person who's seeking to invent a technological protection measure has actually lawfully acquired the work. And so as we try to balance the issues of copyrights and disability rights, we want to try at least from our perspective of licensees of the technical resources, we can come to some sort of, you know, equitable balance as we feel we were able to do in the last session with.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Wanted to appreciate Mr. Marx's comment about remuneration as an issue that I think if we were looking to refine the exemption in some way, would certainly be an issue that we could talk about. Ms. Smith, to your question, just to tag on to what Mr. Bernard had to say, I would add here that what we are trying to do with the previous exemption and the exemption that we'll discuss later in the day is working very closely within the confines of this proceeding to try and incrementally, to the extent that we can meet the extraordinarily high bar that the office has chosen to impose on granting exemptions in this space. And we're doing the very best we can to do that with those. But what we are trying to do with this exemption, what we're urging the office to do with this exemption is to reconsider where that bar is set and to consider setting it at a different place because we are trying to go beyond the bounds of what disability law specifically requires. In particular, we're talking about access to works whose creators, whose distributors have opposed the extension of disability law to in the past, including some of the organizations represented here today. What we are trying to get to a place is for those categories of works where we have faced arguments that requiring them to be accessible under disability law, whether under the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Telecommunications Act and its associated regulations, or the panoply of other disability laws, where right holders have said, "Please don't make us. We cannot be made to do this. It will be too expensive." We've heard arguments that might violate their First Amendment rights and so on and so forth. And the range of new technologies for what the application of disability law has faced difficulty in keeping up. And for the kinds of exemptions that we have discussed with the office both today and in the past, I'm thinking back to the exemption that we proposed back in 2012 around accessibility research to say this incremental process of describing in great detail before an activity can take place legally, exactly how it is likely to play out, to basically prove that level of, to raise that level of evidence before the office in every single circumstance is not tenable for people with disabilities. It's not tenable for the third parties that help them. And I would point the office to the fact that it's taken us the better part of 20 years to get to an ebook accessibility exemption that, and Mr. Reichert and others on the call here have participated in. Just to get that refined, to recognize what's a pretty uncontroversial point, which is that blinded visually impaired and other people with print disabilities have the right to read. It's taken 20 years in an international treaty and countless hours and countless pages to get us to that result. And when we think about the wide range of disabilities, the wide range of copyrighted works, and the wide range of techniques that it takes to make those works accessible to all of those communities of people with disabilities, that we need a different approach than the extremely incremental approach that has been adopted so far. So I think we are keen to discuss issues like the one Mr. Marx raised up about remuneration. That makes sense. But we are asking the office to reconsider the approach that has taken to these issues over the past two decades and put the needs of people with disabilities first. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I do want to say as we, we can return to that issue about the breadth of the proposed exemption. And I want to say that I don't believe the office has asked for great detail exactly how circumvention would be used in every single instance. So I do want to sort of point the comments a little bit to our notice of inquiry and our proposed rule because I'm not quite sure that's been the standard at which the office has been evaluating, not just for accessibility issues, but across the board, the various exemptions that's been adopted through this rulemaking. But I do take your point that you are asking the office to consider an exemption for all works for a perhaps broader set of instances than we have before. I guess I will bring the question back to you, or if you believe there is another proponent who'd be better suited, feel free to reach back. Could you explain why you think there are adequate commonalities across the various technological protection measures, types of works, as well as effects on the market or adverse effects to make this a suitable exemption?
Sure. I'd be happy to jump in here. And I think maybe the best way for us to answer this question is to first turn to Mr. Rosenblum and then turn to Mr. Rockfall after that to speak to the salience of these issues, both as they affect the deaf and hard of hearing community and as they affect the blinded and visually impaired community. If I can call Mr. Rosenblum first?
Mr. Rosenblum, please go ahead.
Hello. Thank you so much, Mr. Reed. The Joint Creators and Copyright Owners and others like them seek to keep the status quo, which is to require any accessibility to copyrighted products to only be allowed under the narrow and strict parameters that currently exist. The current copyright regime is inaccessible and must change. I'll give you a few examples. The NAD has a subsidiary, Described and Captioned Media Program, DCMP, which provides captioning and audio description for educational video content. Their shared content is shared at no cost to schools and students across the country via YouTube. However, we have had to deal with threats and actual shutdowns of the DCMP YouTube page because what was thought to be an agreement with the content copyright owner for a single video was later found to be incorrect. If the provision of captioning or audio description on any copyrighted content were not considered a copyright infringement simply because it is the provision of accessibility, then we would not have this problem.
Mr. Rosenblum, may I please ask a follow-up question for that? There is the--
Oh, actually, I wasn't finished. I'm sorry. I was just regaining. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Please continue.
Perfect. It is not enough to only have a commitment from the Joint Creators and Copyright Owners as there are thousands of content creators who do not provide captioning or audio description. Worse yet, even when there are community volunteers or organizations such as DCMP offering to do the captioning or audio description at no cost, it's nevertheless often a struggle to just get the permission to do so. Captioning and audio description should be a mandate, not an option. Also, where there have been discriminatory barriers, it's been my pleasure to litigate, to bring those unnecessary barriers down. And we have successfully litigated against Netflix, Harvard, and MIT simply because they refuse to caption content. They all argued copyright protections were a barrier. Netflix specifically attempted to argue that it was not responsible for or able to provide captioning on content that it did not only merely distribute, but they cited Section 1201 as part of this argument. We did get around these arguments, but it took years to complete this litigation and obtain the needed relief. The bottom line here is that the burden has been on people with disabilities to bring forth examples of barriers as they come up each time under existing and new technologies. This is problematic on so many levels. There's so much content that is not captioned or audio described, and it's not possible for us to address them all under the current copyright system. More importantly, a large percent of people with disabilities are underemployed or unemployed. And yet, your current system requires these long oppressed people to secure legal representation to navigate complex legal issues. All of this for everyday people with disabilities to simply be able to enjoy copyrighted works to the same extent as everyone else. So what should the policy for copyright be? To make it as difficult for people with disabilities to access works that are available to everyone else? To make people with disabilities bring each specific instance of inaccessibility in a constantly and quickly changing field of technology to the Copyright Office and then wait months and years before they are finally given access? What's the flip side? Copyright owners having to vigilantly guard against infringing use? But isn't that what they're supposed to do? Shouldn't the burden be on them to stop infringing use rather than on people with disabilities to gain access? In fact, there's no evidence introduced by anyone that shows preemptive accessibility would lead to an increase in copyright infringement. As a matter of public policy, this choice is easy. The Joint Creators and Copyright Owners are basically saying that people with disabilities must anticipate every technological barrier, seek regulatory review for each and every one of them, and hope for a favorable outcome long after the desired time of access. and hope for a favorable outcome long after the desired time of access. This is not tenable, efficient, or effective. All parties here should agree upon a system that incorporates accessibility as an inherent aspect of copyright law and determine how best to best guard against abuses without putting that burden on people with disabilities. History is replete with examples of oppressed and marginalized groups being denied access to publicly available programs and services. The current set of copyright requirements creates barriers that contribute to this continued oppression and marginalization for people with disabilities. We ask that you be on the right side of history and get rid of an oppressive copyright structure that stands in the way of accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I think you have perhaps a lot to respond to. I know, for example, you are here representing Netflix. So if you would like to speak specifically on that matter, you can. Or the original question, which I will also pose to you, is whether you think there is sufficient commonality across uses of works or if there is other ways the office could approach the very important policy issues from within the regulatory authority granted to it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And to be clear, one member of my coalition is the Motion Picture Association, and Netflix is a member of that trade association. But I'm not here today appearing directly on behalf of Netflix as an individual company. And I appreciate the overview that Mr. Rosenblum gave, and I appreciate his passion. But I do think some of what he had to say about our positions are inaccurate. He said, for example, and I'm paraphrasing, that, you know, we're here in this proceeding trying to preserve every restriction that's currently in place with respect to these issues. And as the panel prior to this one displayed, that's not correct. We agreed to a number of the requests for expansion there. We are not opposing the exemption that would broaden the ebooks exemption to meet the Marrakesh standards. And so we are not trying to take a maximalist approach here. That said, the immediately proposed exemption is so broad that we did feel that we needed to oppose it. And there's a number of reasons for that. You asked if there are commonalities across all works that would allow you to change the ground rules here and grant an all works exemption. And to my knowledge, there are not. There are different issues with respect to different categories of works. And that's one reason why the proceeding was designed the way it was, to try to focus in on specific classes of works and provide the office with some flexibility to address specific issues that come up without using a blunt instrument that goes to every issue that might be out there in the marketplace. And so there's a number of things with this proposal, in addition to the all works issue, that there's just not limitations of the sort we tend to see in the proceeding. One that we touched on earlier after Ms. Chauvet's question was, there's not really an identification of who would be the ones engaging in the circumvention the way there was in Class III that we discussed earlier. There's not a market check requirement or a requirement that there be no alternative to circumvention. The focus on how the copies are obtained is lacking in the proposal. The security measures that might be implemented to protect the copies after circumvention are lacking. There's no use of the sole purpose language that the office tends to use. There's not language to address how the copies would be disseminated and by who. And so all of those things, while we do want to try to work with folks to address this important issue, are things that give us pause and have caused us to oppose this exemption. And just my last point on the scope here is that the rulemaking and the way it's structured, this is not the only set of issues that it's designed to deal with. And if you were to start adopting all works proposals, there's a whole range of things that will be proposed and that have been in the past that present lots of different difficult problems. There could be an all works for educational purposes, all works for criticism and comment, all works for remix, and ultimately all works for any lawful purpose, which is a proposal that's been out there since well before the DMCA was passed and was not included in the statute by Congress. And this rulemaking was instead to try to address specific issues. So while we do recognize the import of the issues here, we also feel it's very important to preserve the ground rules here in the proceeding. And I thank you.
Thank you. And I know we have a lot of other hands up, but I think I would like to pose one follow-up question to you, Mr. Williams, before we get to some others, which is, because you did, I know joint creators have participated in many of these classes, and we'll hear from you, you know, throughout the week. When you talk about the potential effect to other exemptions, is it your clients view that this would pose issues for the other exemptions? And if so, why? I mean, do you see all works having different market effects or different adverse effects? Could you connect that to the statute? Or is it more of a, just a concern about the office's authority or both? Thank you.
I would say it is both. I think the office has been right to look to the statute and legislative history in terms of defining the scope of its authority. But also the purpose, I think, of limiting that authority was to create a proceeding that has the benefit of allowing the office to flexibly deal with different issues in different spaces with respect to different type of works and actually look through those specifics to determine what are the needs that are not being met in the marketplace? What are the problems that are unresolved? And how can you act in a way that is contoured to address those specifics? So I think there was a reason that it was designed the way it is. And I do think it has benefits. I think the expansion in 2006 that you made to what would be considered in the proceeding for being granted, you know, it pushed the outer limits of the statute. It was a new approach from the office as to how exemptions could be crafted. But it did ultimately allow you to grant more exemptions rather than fewer exemptions. And I think that's what the office has acknowledged over time, that the focus on user groups combined with a focus on specific classes of copyrighted works has actually led to more exemptions, not fewer, because you're able to more narrowly tailor them to address specific issues. So that's how I see the way this proceeding was set up and the way it's supposed to work.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. To try to go in order, Mr. Bernard, I think you had your hand up next, and then we will go to Mr. Ban. So, Mr. Bernard, if you would like to answer the question about whether you feel that this class has sufficient commonalities? Or alternatively, I think my next question is if the office felt constrained in its authority, given the statutory language, to focus on a particular class of works, could you maybe suggest what classes of works we might be able to consider in this request?
Sure. So I think the commonality is that the works are inaccessible to somebody. That is, that a member of the public is not able to access these works, whatever they are. And this is very difficult to predict. There are hundreds of different kinds of disabilities out there. There are eight categories of works that are predicted that fall into smaller units, depending upon the line of the Copyright Act you're looking toward. And there are many thousands of different types of technologies that are emerging all at the same time. So the idea here about looking at the commonality of the works as being the work is inaccessible to a qualified person with a disability, this, I think, is all you need. When Mr. Williams talks about changing the ground rules, the ground rules in question are within the purview of the Copyright Office to consider adjusting the ground rules so that for this class of individuals, that is, people who have disabilities, who are not able to equitably participate in society because they cannot access copyrighted works that just happen to be in a box, a digital box, this is the kind of constraint that the Copyright Office can actually address without having to run afoul of Section 1201. The room is in there. 1201 doesn't prescribe a circumstance where you couldn't identify all classes of works that meet a certain set of criteria. And here the criteria is that they are wanting to be used by a person who has a disability in order to access that work. So I do think that that is what's at the heart of the issue here. And I think the Copyright Office is well situated to address this fundamental public policy concern. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Van, from you next. And again, I think, one, to keep us moving on and put a spin as we call on you, the record suggests that sound recordings may not have TPMs on them. And of course, there is existing exemptions for literary works, which we'll get into a hearing later, and audiovisual works. And I think without, you know, this is not directed at questioning the public policy reasons behind this request, but is there a need to have an exemption for sound recordings or literary works? And if so, you know, please let us know. Mr. Ban?
Sure. So in answer to that question, is even if maybe there are, generally, sound recordings don't have technological protections, but that doesn't mean that there are no sound recordings without technological protections or that there are no, that there will be no sound recordings in the next three years that will have technological protections. But it all goes to the bigger point in terms of the commonality. And the commonality is this, and this is also how it's very different from, you know, Mr. Williams' Parade of Horribles and the floodgates opening, is these communities are seeking an exemption because the rights holders have not met their legal obligation to provide all of these works in accessible format. Meaning that they have a legal obligation to provide everything in an ADA compliant way, and they aren't doing that. And so because they aren't meeting their legal obligation, this community is seeking the opportunity to self-help because, again, the rights holders
Well, can I just, can I just ask one question? I mean, is the exemption at when there is not an accessible version? Is that like a market check to build into that? Because I think, starting out, the question was, if it's not, if we're not seeing it for sound recordings and finding that tricky to square with what you just said now, which is that the rights holders are failing at their obligation, if they're not even using TPMs, is that what's happening? Just wanted to make sure I understand your position.
No, well, it's certainly with most sound recordings, there isn't an issue. But that's not, it's not the case. All sound recordings are certainly possible that within the next three years, this will be an issue with sound recordings. But it's all part of this bigger, the bigger problem, which is, again, and this is again how you distinguish it from all educational uses because, you know, there is no legal obligation to make everything available for educational uses for all people. And so, you know, there is a common, my point here is there is a commonality here, and there's a way of distinguishing this set of uses from all others.
Okay, thank you. I think, Mr. Reed, if you would like to respond to some of that. And, you know, similarly, I think the question of, I appreciate the nature of the request, but if you also wanted to address, do you have an opinion if the office felt like it needed to delineate what might be appropriate? And I think in particular, literary works or sound recordings, or I think the request referenced sculptural works. And I'm just trying to understand, you know, like what the use case is for that. So thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Smith. And I'll try and tee up a couple of directions that we may want to head as we head into the next phase of the hearing. But I wanted to briefly respond to Mr. Williams' comment, which conceptualizes this proceeding as sort of a neutral one. And what I want to underscore is that this is not a neutral proceeding. The experience of most people, when they seek to experience purchase, access to a copyrighted work or a subscription service that provides access to a copyrighted work, is to pay their money and then get access as advertised. And the experience for people with disabilities has long been filtered through a permission structure. And that permission structure comes from copyright, and this is not new. This dates back to the 1930s, when the Pratt-Smoot Act put the library in the position of distributing Braille and other accessible versions of books. There was an insistence from the publishers that they be asked permission. In the lead-up to the 1976 Copyright Act, publishers appeared before Congress and demanded to be asked permission, which gave us Section 710 of the Copyright Act of 1976, which basically required the Copyright Office to promulgate forms strictly for the purpose of asking permission. And when that permission wasn't provided, that finally led us to the CHAFI amendment, which made that permission compulsory. But you have to understand that that permission structure is far in a way more than people without disabilities typically face when they are trying to get access to a work. People without disabilities who want to access a work don't have to come to the Copyright Office and ask permission to do that. They simply get it. So we're working against this historical permission structure. And we're trying to say, yes, you could be supportive of accessibility, as many folks were in their comments, as the office was in the notice of proposed rulemaking here. But actually, being supportive of accessibility requires saying that people with disabilities have got a civil right and a human right to access copyrighted works on equal terms. And any place that we impose the permission structure of Section 1201 in this proceeding in front of them and say, you have to come and ask, and you have to come prove all of the specific types of works that you'd like to access, the particular ways that you want to do them, that you're putting them in a different place than people without disabilities. So I just wanted to want to make sure that we have that historical background here. This is not a neutral proceeding. This is one that stacks the deck against people with disabilities. And we're trying to get to one that's a little bit more egalitarian. And I'm happy to move us on here, but happy to yield the floor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Marx, would you like to respond?
Thank you very much. I wanted to first say that, you know, I appreciate the frustrations that have been expressed by Mr. Rosenblum and Mr. Reed. And I think it's the advocacy that has pushed disability rights forward. It's very, very important. I think what we're trying to get at with our opposition here is, is there a place where we can achieve some balance? So even with the CHAFI amendment, right, there are limitations that the works have to be distributed in this specialized form to enable meeting the challenges of disabled people. And it shouldn't be distributed beyond disabled people. Those are the sorts of parameters that I think that we feel should be in place in order to serve the purposes that need to be served for disabled people without, while still recognizing that their problem with digital works is that they are so easily infringed environment. And so if we can build in parameters, not necessarily, in this, I'm expressing my personal view of every single possible type of class of work, but more happening, the uses will be limited to disabled people who have legally acquired access to the legally acquired who have legally acquired access to the legally acquired work, whether they bought it, they have a subscription to the work. You know, that there are ways to limit when the TPMs are circumvented to enable the work to be more accessible, that it's limited to those people who have disability, that it's not made available to the general public out of march. These are the sorts of issues that I think are giving us a lot of pause. The- currently a bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. I think next I will call on Mr. Taylor, and then we will start to move on. And I guess, Mr. Taylor, I would be curious whether you agree with Mr. Marx. And then to sort of keep it moving by asking two points. Do you agree, it almost seems to me in this hearing that there is beginning to be a consensus that legally acquired or some sort of a remuneration, you know, qualification is what is intended, part one. And then part two, I think part of my question is, is it helpful to promulgate an exemption that might be surplusage? Or is that, is it not helpful to do that in light of some of the policy considerations? I realize you may not be the, you're the person who got called on, although you may not be the person that's suited to answer that. So if you wish, that is my next question. Mr. Taylor?
Right. Well, I do agree mostly with Mr. Marx. Not to throw him under the bus or anything, but I do have to point out that this is a rulemaking proceeding. And in the rulemaking proceeding, an agency only has so much authority, and you do have to follow the law. And that law says that you create exemptions for works. And this rulemaking is supposed to be a failsafe. So to the extent that anybody, any group, any type of uses want to be able to circumvent, everybody has to come here. And so when Congress created this, they intended that everybody comes here and identifies where it gets in the way. And I think that in this case, for this group of users, this process is also very helpful because it allows issues to actually boil up that we can respond to. When this was first, when disability issues first came into the DVD area, it was making players more accessible. And our immediate response was, "How can we do this?" And you don't have to rely on the rulemaking to come to talk to us. So every time that we are made aware of an issue, at least DVD, CCA, and AACS LA, we have tried to do whatever we can to be more responsive and make sure that we come up with an approach that honors the law and makes sure that 1201 and this rulemaking process really reaches an equitable balance between protecting copyrights in the digital marketplace and serving those needs of the communities that make use of those copyrights. And I'm not sure if I answered your question, Ms. Smith, but if you want to repeat it, I'm happy to try.
I think that's okay. I think we'll move on. Thank you, though, Mr. Taylor. And I think next, Ms. Chauvet has a question.
Yes, thank you. I see Mr. Williams has his hand raised. So I would also like you to please comment on this next question. We talked about the history. So the legislative history, specifically the House Manager's Report, states that Section 102 categories of works are only a starting point for defining a class of works because, for example, books and computer programs may technically both be literary works, but it is exceedingly unlikely that the impact of the prohibition on the circumvention of access control technologies will be the same for scientific journals as it is for computer operating systems. So, Mr. Williams, if you could please answer the specific question of like, how does proponents' approach align or misalign with this legislative history? And then if you could add on what you were planning to discuss, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Yes, so that legislative history, you know, rather than suggesting that the proceeding over time would likely expand to an all-works type of approach for exemptions, it actually suggests that the more likely outcome of marketplace and legal developments would be that the 102 categories of works are unlikely to experience the exact same issues. And therefore, the exemptions would usually, maybe not always, be refined even more than just referencing one of the 102 categories of works because there are differences in markets for things like books and for computer operating systems, even though they are both literary works. And so I don't think that that history that you just pointed to implies that the kind of proposal here is what was intended for the proceeding. I will say there are differences. And one, I think, is maybe highlighted by something that was in the reply comments from the proponents here. They cited to a YouTube video about an individual who had created his own gaming setup for purposes of enabling him to have a more accessible and enjoyable experience playing a PC game on a Microsoft operating system. And Microsoft has really taken big strides to address these issues, including releasing an adaptive controller that's available in the marketplace. And they've worked extensively with disabilities advocates in that community to try to address as many of these needs as possible, including by issuing best practices kind of guidelines for developers to try to make sure that people understand and can anticipate these issues. And so companies like that, as well as the Motion Picture Studios, have really been investing a lot in trying to address these issues. And there's been some mentions of these companies failing to comply with disabilities laws or their obligations. And my understanding is there is a very large amount of compliance. I do understand that there were prior lawsuits, like the one mentioned earlier, against Netflix. But these companies have really come a long way and are working very hard, I know, to try to address these issues and really want to address them. And so I can't speak to the details that Mr. Rosenbloom spoke to about the Netflix litigation. But I know they have received awards for their work in this space, that they frequently exceed their legal obligations. So I just didn't want those comments about this widespread failure to comply with legal obligations to go unresponded to. With respect to the Microsoft controller I mentioned, it actually has ports on it that third-party devices may be plugged into. My understanding is using those unaffiliated devices doesn't require circumvention for people who would want to create their own setups. And my understanding is that's probably also true, although the video that was included from YouTube didn't provide all the specifics we would need. It's very likely the case that that individual who was able to create his own setup, it didn't look like he had to engage in circumvention to do that. And so I do think that analyzing that issue may be different than analyzing eBooks that don't have a read-aloud function, as you have in the past. Those are two different questions with potentially two different answers when it comes to whether circumvention is necessary. And so that's the main point I wanted to make.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I want to give Mr. Reed or Ms. Hirsch an opportunity to respond about the legislative history and whether the approach proposed by the proponents aligns with that, but also, in light of the House Manager's Report, also seeing a distinction between the types of work where the availability for fair use purposes is unlikely to be affected by laws against circumvention of TPMs in the same way. So again, how does your approach align with the legislative history, Mr. Reed or Ms. Hirsch?
And I'll hand off to Ms. Hirsch to address the legislative history. I just wanted to observe quickly in response to Mr. Taylor and Mr. Williams that in part, much of the progress that was achieved by the ESA's member companies was spurred by more than a decade-long dispute with the Federal Communications Commission, whereas early as 2012, the ESA was filing exemption waivers, trying to get out from under the FCC's rules. I'd also note that the Consumer Electronics Association, or what was then the Consumer Electronics Association, opposed regulations by the FCC to extend closed-capturing mandates to DVD players and other optical media players after the exemption was narrowly granted, but was largely difficult to be used by the Office back in the 2012 rulemaking. I also just wanted to underscore before we hand it off to Ms. Hirsch to talk about the legislative history. I do want to make sure we get a chance for Mr. Rackfall, Mr. Reichert, Ms. Charleston, and Mr. Vogler to speak to both the issues that are facing the blind and visually impaired community, to speak to the issues that are facing libraries that work specifically in this space, and to Mr. Vogler to talk about the work that technologists are doing to improve accessibility on this front. But I'll hand it off to Ms. Hirsch to talk about the legislative history. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. And then I would like to also, I would like to hear from the people you named, Mr. Reed, on their views. And I think it would be helpful to next turn the questions, which I will after Ms. Hirsch speaks, about the examples that are currently in the record. So go ahead, Ms. Hirsch.
Thank you. So there's a few points that Mr. Williams brought up that I'd like to respond to. I think, most importantly, it's that the legislative history doesn't dictate one exact approach to the rulemaking process. It gives the registrar the ability to make some decisions. And so the quote that you brought up from the House Committee report, there's another, there's a quote, the House Committee report says that, they write that they were concerned that the marketplace realities may someday dictate a different outcome, resulting in less access rather than more to copyrighted materials that are important to education, scholarship, and other socially vital endeavors. And I think what we're seeing here today and what we've been seeing is this exact problem, that the rulemaking process is ultimately, it's stifling access. It's, in many situations, cutting off access to copyrighted materials for people with disabilities. And as that quote shows, that was a real fear. What we see in the 1975 House Judiciary Report speaks further to this fear, and in particular, to the Section 102A categories. So the 1975 House Judiciary Committee Report explains that the second sentence of Section 102 lists seven broad categories, which the concept of works of authorship is said to include. The use of the word "include" as defined in Section 101 makes clear that the listing is illustrative and not limited, and that the seven categories do not necessarily exhaust the scope of original works of authorship that the bill is intended to protect. Excuse me. A little bit later, they also say-
I'm so sorry. I realize that we just have about 20 minutes left. So I'm going to go ahead and ask some questions. And feel free to answer this first question about the examples that have been provided in the record. The first is that there's one example including a discussion of video conferencing platforms such as Zoom, which proponents say have raised significant accessibility issues in a variety of employment, healthcare, and other contexts. So my question is, if you could please explain how this example evidences that the prohibition on circumventing access controls is the cause of the accessibility issues in this example?
I can take a swing at that one, Ms. Chauvet.
Okay, Mr. Reed, yes, that would be great. Please, if you could please just raise your hand so we can, for the court reporter and interpreters and everyone, follow along. Thank you.
Apologies for that. On the issue of accessible video conferencing, and I think, you know, we've talked about specific examples in the record, both with video conferencing, video games, software of various sorts, video, I mentioned video games, and the various other examples that we've teed up. What we are trying not to do here is engage in the creation of 10 or 12 or 15 distinct classes of works.
I want to make sure. Okay, go ahead.
I just want to make sure that we are able to adjust the specific examples that you've referred. So you mentioned GameGuard, which proponents say blocks third-party applications and hardware from accessing the video game. So again, if there wasn't really a discussion about how that is evidencing the prohibition on circumventing access control is the cause of the accessibility issues, I see Mr. Reichert has had his hand raised. So if he could please address that specific question, that would be great.
Sure, I'd be glad to weigh in at some point. I'm not so sure that I'm best suited to that. Maybe Reed or others will come up with someone better to address that. But remember me. Thanks. Appreciate it.
So if so, I could please explain how the example of GameGuard is showing how the access controls, I think the circumvention of access controls is relevant to that accessibility issue?
If it's okay for me to jump in on that, Ms. Chauvet, I'd be happy to. This is Blake Reed. I'm sorry, Ms. Chauvet, it looked like you were saying something, but you were on mute.
Thank you. Sure. I just want to make sure, like, all the proponents are given an opportunity. So if you could briefly explain that, that would be great, Mr. Reed. Thank you.
So I would say with the GameGuard example, the accessibility problem is not caused by the TPM itself. The accessibility problem is with the design of the games that GameGuard or similar technologies protect. And the notion there is that if those digital rights management technologies were not in place, that technologists, like the folks that we discussed in our comment, are like Professor Vogler, could actually design, basically retrofitted accessibility features that would come in and enable unique control schemes that would add things like closed captions or description, or that might simplify language for people with intellectual disabilities, or modify the game in various other ways to make it accessible. And maybe it would make sense, and I know you want to dig in on video games, but this might be a good opportunity to bring Professor Vogler into the conversation.
Really quickly, I'd also wanted to ask, since you said that, for the example of the GameGuard, that a TPM is not an issue for the accessibility issues. So my other question is the example of encrypted media extensions or EME technology, which proponents say blocks any authorized alterations to videos, including color shifting, to help individuals with color blindness. So again, is that an example where the TPM is the cause of the accessibility issues? Or is it not the cause of the accessibility issues, similar with the GameGuard technology?
I wanted to clarify what I said, if I could, which is not that the TPM doesn't cause an accessibility problem. Basically, the TPM prevents the interoperability of accessibility features, accessibility tools. And I think likewise with encrypted media extensions, the idea is if you might use a third-party accessibility tool to access the media that's protected by EME, that technology like EME is going to interfere with the operation of that technology. So it's not that the TPM doesn't cause an accessibility problem. It's that it hinders, I guess all I was trying to say there is it's not the TPM that's inaccessible. It's the copyrighted work that's inaccessible, and that the TPM prevents interoperation in both of these cases. And I think we could-
I'm so sorry, I only just have a few minutes left. So I guess my question then, as a follow-up, Mr. Reed, is, for the circumvention of the GameGuard technology, it's not relevant to all types of copyrighted works, right? And similar with the EME technology?
Correct. We were giving those examples as, you could certainly fit those into, in the case of video games, sort of a hybrid 102A class of works. We weren't trying to offer those examples as examples of TPMs that literally themselves cover every single category of copyrighted works. We're trying to give you a mosaic of different examples to illustrate how TPMs, like the ones in the examples, apply to copyrighted works across the spectrum of 102A classes in a way that justifies the proposed exemption, which would cut across all of those classes and all of those TPMs. Is that responsive?
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Mr. Vogler, would you like to comment?
Okay. I am Dr. Christian Vogler, and I actually would like to respond to a couple of your questions. First of all, the gaming question. I wanted to clarify that the GameGuard prevents on-screen typing of works. It doesn't work. And that causes accessibility issues. And secondly, I was going to talk about audiovisual, video conferencing- And secondly, I was going to talk about audiovisual, video conferencing. If you, if the stream is encrypted, that causes issues occasionally. And I can provide some examples from real life. I am having currently a family emergency, and it's requiring my sister and I to communicate with each other. My sister's quite stressed because she is the person on site responsible for dealing with this family situation. And we talk, and sometimes it's quick, and the sound environment is bad. The audio is bad, the video is all bad. And it makes it very difficult for me to understand what my sister is talking about. So I point the situation out because there are options as to how I can work around this. And it would be nice for consumers to have these kind of options, such as artificial intelligence. That's something that could help reduce the noise, improve the signal. Unfortunately, these applications have not been designed for the situation that I'm speaking of. I can't apply the solutions currently as the technology is designed because TPM prevents access to allow me to do so. And to make a broader point, with new technologies that are created, there are so many more options that will improve accessibility. And I want to emphasize this point. Accessibility is not a one-size-fits-all option. We're going to figure out how to provide accessible works that are designed for the individual. And this is a new way of looking at the issue. This means it's going to require innovation in the accessibility world from people who are designing and engineering, being allowed to use the technology to provide the access necessary. And if the TPM prevents this accessibility, we are blocking all these ideas that could take off because of this barrier. And this is the situation. This is in the environment. We can't wait for three years so we can go through the next exemption process to be promulgated, especially now the situation with masking. There is technology that can help people communicate, but in using masks, but we have to wait three years. And this is a kind of situation in which we cannot wait three years to have resolved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Vogler. Mr. Marx, I see you've had your hand raised for a little bit. So I wanted to ask if you had any further comment. But also, you know, how should the Office consider the availability of accessible works in the market in determining whether a broad class for accessibility use is appropriate? Mr. Marx?
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. If I may, before I try to answer that question, I just wanted to raise one point that Mr. Taylor touched upon. And this goes back really to the 2012 rulemaking, where I met Mr. Reed. And that was when this need was raised about potentially on audiovisual works that are on optical discs protected by CSS and Apple System and ACS, preventing certain uses to make closed captioning or accessibility to disabled people. We encourage, please come to us. And thus, we will offer free license so that you don't even have to circumvent the TPM and have a license to create the sort of tools to help people. So I do want to raise that as a point because even if TPM exists, it doesn't always necessitate that it has to be circumvented in order to meet accessibility issues. Sometimes I can only speak for ACSLA and DVD Copyright Association. The licensed source of technical measures will be willing to work with the disability community, grant the license. Allow that. And when it comes to the classes of work that you were asking about, Ms. Hirsch, I do think one does need to, like we were talking about in Class 3, this notion of market check, whether the already is the copyrighted work available with closed captioning or with audio descriptions will meet the needs of the disability community, such that circumvention is warranted. And I think that analysis probably needs to, market check needs to be more specific. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marx. I'd like to call in Mr. Bernard next, who's had his hand raised, but also to ask this specific question of, you know, how and to what extent should the Office think about structuring a broad accessibility exemption to encourage private efforts to increase accessibility so that the burden doesn't fall entirely on individuals with accessibility needs, being forced to create them on their own? Mr. Bernard?
Let me just answer your question quickly. It would be great if the Copyright Office took that position. I'm not sure that's within the purview of what Congress had in mind here. But I think if the Office were to take that approach, that would be great. Probably the best way to take that approach would actually, to be approved, would be to promulgate the kind of proposition that we've proposed here today under Class 17. I think this is exactly the kind of thing that will motivate people to make their works more accessible. What I wanted to say, though, is I think there's a broad misunderstanding here on lots of folks' part, which is, it doesn't matter the intention of the people who've made the works available and who are the copyright holders. It doesn't matter if they intended their work to be accessible to people with disabilities or not. The problem is that either they are accessible or they're not. A company that's gone out of its way to make a work accessible for large populations of people who have disabilities, it doesn't mean that they've made the work accessible for all of the people who have disabilities. And it's really the people in smaller populations that you don't see in this discussion, right? The groups that are here represent the most powerful constituencies of people with disabilities in the country, and even they are struggling. But the people whose disabilities exist in smaller numbers, those folks don't have solutions. You can make all the accessible game consoles you want to make, and I would encourage that. And you can make, as Mr. Marx said, come to us and we'll make it more accessible for you. That's great. We should definitely be encouraging that kind of an approach. But sometimes companies can't make it more accessible, or won't make it more accessible, or think they have made it accessible enough, or there just isn't a financial interest in doing so. And so I just want to point out, the intentions of the copyright holder aren't the problem here. The problem is that for a citizen, a person with a disability who's trying to get access, lawful access, and I concede, let's add that, that the person is getting lawful access to the work. But trying to have us pigeonhole each of the kinds of uses that someone is going to make, this is why the disability law is framed the way that it is. That's why there are broad sweeping strokes in this context. And it's what distinguishes making work accessible to people with disability from the other kinds of classifications that Mr. Williams was worried about. So I do think, just don't, it doesn't matter whether someone was trying to be helpful or not trying to be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. And Mr. Taylor, would you care to comment?
Yeah, I just would like to go back really quick to the fact of, it's impossible to do a market check for what's available in the marketplace for all the potential works that are available, that would be permissible with this proposed language. And I think that you have to keep in mind that as far as individuals are concerned, as Mr. Reed says, they just get it. And whether they lawfully circumvent or unlawfully circumvent, they go ahead and they get it. But for this proceeding, and why this proceeding is important, is because it allows the advocates, the larger groups, to come and say, this is a problem, or this is not a problem. For example, many of the examples that were provided here, I could not say that they were works that are truly protected by 1201. It wasn't clear to me what was the TPM at play. And they certainly are not touching upon the works that we are most concerned with, which are audiovisual works protected by CSS and ACS. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marx, would you like to add to that and specifically commenting on some of the examples that proponents have provided? And building upon what Mr. Taylor is saying is that they are not necessarily examples where TPMs are the issue for the accessibility?
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. I didn't realize that my hand was still raised, but I think Mr. Taylor covered it, and I have nothing else to add. So thanks. I'll make sure I lower my hand. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I see Mr. Cheney has had his hand raised. Mr. Cheney, would you like to ask a question?
Yes, let me get my video on. Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. I just wanted to probe just a little bit more on this idea that we are talking about here. One of those examples that was talked about in the documents, but not addressed here yet, are sort of the modification of devices. I think there were talked about chairs and other things that may have some some inability to access or modify those sort of devices. Can you talk about maybe why we need that in this example? And maybe give some more concrete examples of that, and why perhaps that doesn't fit with other sort of jailbreaking-type examples that are already in place? And why it might not work to put in language for accessibility in the jailbreaking exemption or repair or modification exemptions? Can you address that?
Ms. Charleston, you haven't spoken. Would you like to respond to that question?
That isn't an area that I have any expertise in answering, but my hand is raised to be recognized at some point.
Why don't you please go ahead with your comment, and then we'll open it up for those answering Mr. Cheney's question.
All right. Thank you. So, oh, let me turn my video on. So, as I stated when I introduced myself, I'm the Executive Director of the Perkins Braille and Talking Book Library, which provides accessible format materials to approximately 25,000 people who are blind or visually impaired, have physical disabilities, or reading disabilities. And the point that I really wanted to make that has to deal with helping my borrowers who are trying to access a format, an accessible, usable format of material. And I have a case in point that I have been trying to assist a blind attorney for the last 16 months to obtain an electronic copy of an 800-page book that he wanted to read. He initially purchased the book and thought that he would have someone available to read it to him. That did not work out. And so we decided to approach the publisher to acquire files to see if that might be working. The publisher insisted that they had no obligation to provide any kind of accessible files. So it took me nearly six months of back and forth arguing to then convince them to provide some kind of accessible files. So they sent image files. I'm sure all of you know, image files are basically pictures of each and every page in the book that would not work with any of the assistive technology that my borrower had to use. So we then again said, image files will not work. We need files that are electronic, that we can put into a device, use assistive technology to access. So several more months passed by, and we finally received an SD card with more files on them that were sent directly to my patron. He could not access those files. I advised him to send those files to me, which he did a couple of weeks ago. When I received the files, I tried to access them on my PC, could not. I tried on a Braille note taker, I could not. I decided to have one of my staff give it a shot and see if they could open the files. They were able to open the files. I advised them to save it under a different name. And let me try again with both of the technologies. I was using a screen reader and my note taker. And I was able to access the files. So I have since sent that version of the files to the attorney to see if he can access the files that we have subsequently received. I don't know if he has yet because he hasn't received them. But my point is that it took us nearly 16 months to get those files. For one person, I serve thousands of people. And how in the world am I supposed to get the materials they need or want to read when it takes so long to get the available materials? Plus, no one solution meets everybody's needs. I think Professor Vogler said that as well. Sometimes my clients are deaf-blind. Sometimes they have low vision. Sometimes they want audio files. And that's what works best for them. So when I'm trying to provide accessible format materials, it is a very huge challenge for the libraries in the field trying to meet the needs of people with disabilities to provide equitable services, to provide access. There's no access, there's no equitable service in what we have right now. And I hope this illustrates that we have a severe problem, and it really needs to be addressed. Those are my remarks. I hope you'll take the time to hear from Clark Rockfall and Mark Reichert, who represent people who are blind and visually impaired, because they have a story to tell. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're actually at the end of the panel, but I would like to go ahead and have Mr. Williams respond. Perhaps you can answer Mr. Cheney's question, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Smith to conclude the panel. Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Yeah, thank you. Quickly, I had raised my hand on your prior question about how to incentivize more accessibility in the marketplace. And, you know, I think my clients already have a lot of incentives. But one way to do it, if you're looking for ways within regulatory language, is to continue in any accessibility exemptions that you adopt to include the market check requirement that folks look for a copy at a reasonable price. I think to the extent people need incentives, that is something that might incentivize increased availability. And to Mr. Cheney's question, which I believe was about accessibility of devices and interoperability with devices, I touched on that a little bit earlier. My understanding is that there are ports in personal computers and in a number of the gaming consoles that allow for third-party peripherals to be connected to the devices such that circumvention would not be required in many cases to use third-party devices that can help with accessibility issues. And I think he also asked about the jailbreaking exemptions. You know, right now, those do apply to specific devices. And I think to the extent that one of the exemptions covers an interoperability issue with a third-party device, you would need to look at the language of the exemption to determine exactly which programs need to be accessed through the circumvention and what would need to be accomplished. But I think he's right that some of that conduct would already be covered potentially.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I realize, Mr. Rockfall, you haven't really had a chance to comment. Would you like to briefly have the last word? And then we'll have Ms. Smith conclude the panel.
Thank you so much. This is Clark Rockfall. And just on behalf of the American Council of the Blind, I would just like to point out is, there are times when ports and peripheral devices are available, and there are times when materials are configured in a way that work with those devices. And again, that's designed to meet specific needs. But it is not always the case that those specific use cases and designs meet the needs for all people with disabilities. And in the cases where accessibility does not meet the needs of the individual, that is when an exemption like this would provide value to our members at the American Council of the Blind, to the library users that Ms. Charleston-
to the library users that Ms. Charleston spoke of in a reasonable and timely manner. Um, if we have to play whack-a-mole with, at every company copyright holder, that is not equal access. That is not meaningful access. That is a lack of integration in our community and a lack of accessibility for any of us, which equals a lack, lack of accessibility for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reichfall, and for everyone who has participated in, um, this class hearing today. Um, I think that will conclude it. Um, again, we appreciate, um, everyone's participation. We are going to take an 11-minute recess. Um, and then we will convene again for class eight, which is a specific existing exemption for literary works and accessibility. So if you are remaining on for the next panel, just, um, keep your video off and we will convene again in 10 minutes. And, um, otherwise, thank you very much.